Welcome everybody to the October 27th meeting of the Franklin Municipal Planning Commission. Thanks for being here. We will start with our meeting minutes from the September meeting. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. I guess, Shawna, do we need to vote for a vice mayor? Or, I guess we will because I've got some items that I need to recuse myself.
Vice chair.
Vice chair.
We'll have a new election tonight.
We will need someone to preside over the secondary consent.
Then before we go on in the agenda, then, since Roger Lindsey's not here tonight, do I have a motion for a vice?
I nominate Clyde Barnhill.
Chair.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Clyde Barnhill will be the vice mayor, I mean, commissioner for the evening, chair for the evening. All right.
He is the vice mayor.
Now, ladies and gentlemen, if there are items that are not on our agenda tonight and you'd like to talk to the commission about that, this is the time for that. If you'll come forward. All right, seeing none, then we'll move on to announcements. Catherine?
The planning department has been working with Oakview School for a little while, doing a box city type of thing, and they had the first day where all of the kids in the second grade got to hear about zoning and how zoning works, and then we will be going back again, and they will be putting their boxes up in their zoning district. So I think that's going to be very interesting for all the kids.
Right. Maybe you can bring them to the commission and we'll decide whether they look good or not, or if they meet the guidelines. All right, great. We'll move on then to any non-agenda items. If there are items that are not on the agenda tonight that you'd like to bring forth to the commission to consider, please come forward and we'll discuss that. Okay. Seeing none, then we'll move on to our consent agenda. I've got several modifications, so if you'll, guys will kind of bear with me. It's been recommended that we pull, or suggested, requested I should say, that we pull item number seven. So that'll be on non-consent. And we've got a couple that are typos that we'll go through. Item 33 should be on consent, unless someone wants to pull it. Item 36 should be non-consent. Item 37 should be consent. And item 38 should be non-consent.
So item 37, you're saying yes.
37 should be consent.
Those are just too backward, okay.
And 38 should be non-consent.
Was that 30, down at the bottom where it says number 30, should that be 39?
Yes, I would assume that would make sense. Two 30s would be challenging. Okay. All right, we're going to start by voting on the initial consent. And just to clarify, those are items eight through 20, 23 through 29, 31, 32, I guess 33, 35, 37, and that would be it for the initial consent. Any items that anyone wants to pull from that agenda? Okay, is there a motion?
Move for approval as amended.
Second.
Okay, move to second, any discussion?
I will not be voting on the initial consent.
Okay, thank you. Great. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. All right, now we're going to do secondary consent, which I will recuse myself from, and pass it to our newest member, Vice Chair Barnhill.
One more time, which one's secondary consent, 21, 22?
30.
21, 22, and 30.
34.
34.
And 34.
That's correct.
I'll entertain a motion on the, on items 21, 22, 30, and 34.
Move for approval.
Second.
Proper motion to second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Secondary consent passes.
I think he's done this before. All right, let's move to item number seven. Ashton Park, PUD subdivision site plan, section two, release and maintenance agreement for landscape improvements.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, when the packets originally came out, the staff recommendation was to extend this to October 25th, 2012. The applicant has since completed the improvements. Staff has inspected it, so I'd like to change the recommendation to release the maintenance agreement.
I'm sorry, to do what?
Release the maintenance agreement. They've completed it, we've inspected it, it's finished.
So even though they're just, they've just been planted, then we don't look at them for...
Oh, no, no, they've been in maintenance already. They went to maintenance a year ago.
Oh, okay. But I mean, but these deficiencies here were...
They are all corrected, and staff has inspected it. It was inspected Friday.
Does that mean they just planted these things?
Yes, they just did go in in the last week or so, but...
I thought the idea of maintenance was that we watched them for a year, right?
Well, we do watch all of the plantings for a year, but unfortunately, we can't hold them forever. I mean, they've satisfied their one year of maintenance, and, you know, we'd love to see those sit there for a little while, but, you know, we don't have the ability to do that, because they have satisfied their one year of maintenance, which is required.
There are 12 of them, though, that they've just planted?
Well, approximately, yes.
Yeah.
But that's, you know, that's standard. I mean, if we were to change that, we could theoretically have people sitting in maintenance for 10 or 20 years, you know, if one tree dies, and then we hold them for yet another year.
But there's a difference between one tree and 12, to me.
Well, yeah.
Okay. As I say, I think we need to look at that, then, because I do not think it's appropriate to let more than, to say, one or two that have been replanted, just immediately go to release of the maintenance plot. I think that's, I think that's not a good idea, because maintenance is supposed to be that they live for a year.
Mm-hmm.
But I won't vote against this, but I definitely think we need to, we need to investigate that.
I'll begin a discussion on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else, Paula?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone representing the applicant that wants to speak tonight to this? Okay, seeing none, anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this as well? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion.
Move for release of the maintenance plot.
Okay, move to seconded, any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Okay, I think we might have messed up, Shawna, on our consent. I think I said item 32, and that was supposed to be on non-consent.
Yeah, we never talked about item 32. Is that supposed to be non-consent?
It's supposed to be non-consent, even though it says initial consent here.
Well, it has the staff recommendations.
It's for deferral, so unless there's questions, we can leave it on deferral till the next meeting.
Yeah, I guess, why don't we do this, just for the record, can we just say that that, well, that'd be kind of odd to say that that vote, you voted for deferral even though you didn't know you voted for deferral. What's the best way, Shawna, to clean this up for the record?
32 should have been deferral.
32 should have been deferral.
It says to...
Yeah. On the... It says to... Yeah, it's...
On my, on my record here, it said consent, so that's why I may have said consent, and...
I think it's, I think it's fine. It's covered. It was staff recommendation for deferral to the next meeting, and you approved that on consent, so it would just get rolled to the November meeting.
Everybody understood they were voting to deferral?
Okay.
Okay, on the next meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that came to speak to that item? Item 32, if you did, I'll be glad to give you time to speak. Okay, then we'll move on.
There might be some people back there, yes.
Would you like to speak? Please come forward and just give us your name and where you live, please.
My name is Philip Brown, and our business is 104 Beta Drive, and it would be our opinion that the rezoning should not take place due to our business being a heavy industrial in the area. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Okay. Well, we will, we defer this for 30 days, is that right, or to the next meeting? We'll be discussing it again in the next meeting if you want to come back for that. Thank you, sir.
That would not be 30 days.
No, it's November 17.
Correct. That's correct, because it's Thanksgiving. Okay, item 36, if I'm correcting all my revisions here. Hazy Grove subdivision preliminary plat, not final plat, but preliminary plat, four acre, four lots on 2.85 acres located at 212 River Bend Drive.
Staff recommends approval with conditions.
Okay. If anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item, if so, please come forward and state your name and, and, and if you can hold your comments to two minutes apiece, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening, Steve Kentrell, I'm at 583 Overview Lane, directly abutting of this property. We appreciate the commission hearing this tonight. I think we were here approximately two years ago when this was rejected the last time, when I believe that was the second time. I'll keep my comments brief, I think others will have probably much more cogent things to say. But I would ask this, the geography of the property has not changed, not in the last two years since it was rejected as being unsuitable for building, not in the last 20-some-odd years since it was, I think, initially zoned that way. The water, stormwater runoff conditions are terrible. It's a lake in every heavy rain, and it routinely floods my backyard even with nothing built on it. Since nothing has changed, I would respectfully ask the commission, how many bites at this apple do they get before we finally say it's just not suitable for building? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Caroline Grossman, 438 Forest Park Circle. Our property is in Forest Crossing, and that's up to the property in question. Previously, this property, the deed that was filed with Williamson County back in 1993, had notes on the plat, and the plat was part of the deed which was filed, said that, that no building, filing, or grading will be permitted in natural resource area. Mowing and planting trees and shrubs will be permitted. The whole entire lot area was deemed a natural resource, and was conveyed and sold to Mr. Roberts, you know, at the time with that designation. We would question, I questioned when this changed, and was there a public forum, was no, because notice was not given to us other than tonight's request to separate the divisions. But I would ask when it changed from a public easement to a residential zoning. As previous speaker said, it is, habitually gets flooded during the May 2010 flooding. Water went all the way from the front of the property, all the way towards the back, which is higher ground, and stayed that way for several days. Any developments in that area would have to address that flooding. We would also say that the design for the houses to be jetting out into the field is incongruent with the present developments of River View and Forest Crossing, in that it would look as if the houses are sticking out in the middle of a field. The present configuration is not designed to be like a traditional cul-de-sac. We would also question the maintenance of the private driveway, and also whether these houses would be subject to rental. Presently, River View is allowed to rent houses, but there are covenants within the homeowners association agreements in Forest Crossing that there are no rental houses to be allowed. We would question whether this would also be in the homeowners agreement for this development, because our concern would be that if it is rental property, the private drive would not be maintained. Also, there's some undevelopable areas of the lot, particularly Lot 4, that juts way out, and if it wasn't for all of the neighbors cutting the grass, it would not be cut. Mr. Roberts has not been a very good neighbor. He has left, let the grass grow, the weeds grow to about four feet high. A lot of the area is cut down by neighbors, but there is a big, large part of it that remains four feet high. Also, there is a piece of farm or bush hog implement that's been left on the property for 10 years. We're just concerned if the property was developed, that it would be incongruent, might devalue the homes around it, and also that if it was subject to rental property, that it would not be maintained. And we would ask that you vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Timothy Leidig, 430 Forest Park Circle. I'm also treasurer of the homeowners association at Forest Crossing. Carolyn Grossman is my neighbor. I would, I'll keep it quick, because she went a little over. We noticed the flooding, severe flooding, a large lake during the rains from last year. I'll second that the property's not been maintained. I will also second that the grading doesn't look to be congruent with a development, specifically with the density that is on this plat that we're looking at. Also, just second Carolyn Grossman's comments on all the pertinent facts about rentals and the, who's going to take care of the property, since there's no covenant for homeowners association. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Dowell McKee, I live at 220 River Bend, with my wife Nancy. The same red flags that were raised on two separate occasions when this was denied are still in existence. The plat, as you see it, is almost identical to the one that was previously turned down. As others have spoken about the homeowners association, and who's going to maintain what is really, what really is defined, should be a road, not a private drive, the rain garden situation is also responsibility of those, of those homeowners, who's going to maintain that. There is no value to any of the properties around us, because taking a green space away is not going, is going to do value. I have to say that I'm assuming that Mr. Roberts still owns this property, since during this week, Williamson County put a sign on the property saying that it would be sold today at 1:30 for delinquent taxes. So I'm assuming that was taken care of, and that he is still the owner. If I might be permitted, how many of the panel here have physically been to this site? Thank you, I appreciate that. Let me, let me, in your, in your report, it's described as a fairly flat property. I'm not sure what that definition is, but let me, let me paint you a picture. This is the property. Everything around it is high ground. It is a natural collection basin for all the stormwater in the area. Let me, let me paint it a little bit more. This is, my hand is River Gate Drive. It forms a dam at the end of this property that is slanted, as you see here. I've laid a packet up there for you to look at, that's labeled opposition or documentation opposing this. Turn to the back pages, there's about five or six pictures of the water on this property that is now defined as a non-floodplain. If, all I ask is, if you lived here next to this property, or if you were choosing to live there, you as a personal situation, would you agree to this proposal? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Eva Go, I live on 567 Overview, and one of the homes would be directly behind me, and my concern would like other speakers about the water flooding and the value of the home that eventually will come up. I hope you vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Charles Shepherd, I live at 440 Forest Park Circle, and I back up behind the property. I'm just voting against this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Andrew Mogish, I live at 565 Overview Lane. My property backs up to Lot 4 of the proposal, and Lot 4 is the largest lot, but it's largely not really buildable. There's the gas easement that runs through it, plus it's kind of triangular in shape. And I don't see where, even how they're going to be able to shoehorn a house that's into that lot, let alone one that's conducive to the Forest Crossing, River View layout of homes. It was mentioned before about the rain gardens, I've got a concern there. The builder, developer seems to indicate that that is the solution to the flooding problem. There is a drainage issue, and the geography of the land does channel the water very effectively, as was stated before, down to the bottom of the property. Those rain gardens, I don't see are going to help the matter. The water's still going to collect. My fear is that the developer, in order to prevent any flooding in the newly constructed homes, is going to have to alter the geography of the natural geography of that land, which is going to move the water somewhere, potentially into Overview Lane homes, or maybe even across the road, into homes even across the street. So for a lot of reasons here, I don't feel that it's in our best interest to do this, and I would oppose this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Tracy Marlin, I'm at 448 Forest Park Circle, and I would just like to voice that I am not approving or wanting this development to happen behind my home as well. And I just second what Carol Grossman has up here, and she's done a lot of research on this. She has lived there much longer than I have, I've only been there four years, and I just second her motions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Doreen Zenthar, and I live at 571 Overview Lane, which of course is backing right up to that property. And I have voiced in the past my concerns about those water gardens working, and I really don't want to have a flooded yard, and I agree with everything that everyone else has said so far. Thank you if you vote against this.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, then, is there someone representing the applicant?
David St. George, 227 River Bend Drive. I'm one of the neighbors that cuts the front part of that property, keeps it, keeps it up. But my concern is, is the, the quality of the home. The home would be facing, two brick homes, and the homes in Forest Crossing are all solid brick homes. So I would be looking if this were, you know, if I was for it, for a four-sided brick home. Upkeep of the open property, if this thing should fly, the green space, who takes care of that? Who maintains the water gardens, and who inspects the water gardens? Because if number four isn't taking care of his, or number two, is number one and three going to work? You know, I think these things flow in, I'm not sure. I think they flow into each other. And fourth, the rentals. Too many rentals up in that, up in that neighborhood now, and I think that the city should look in, not as, I don't know if it goes through you, but the city should look into things like that in neighborhoods, because it only takes away from a neighborhood with families and retired people, where you have too many rentals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Nancy Whitmore, I live at 605 Overview Lane, which is just across the street from the property we're discussing tonight. I've lived at this address for 24 years, and I have seen on many, many occasions the water that stands in this field. As far as our stormwater system, it has been pretty effective, just because of the retainage of the water in this particular area. If you could, you have pictures of what happened during the flood in 2010, and just from those pictures, you can see that even then, that this property was way out of bounds as far as the water. One of the things I did, is I went back and I looked at the city of Franklin and your live green documents that you have on your, on the website, and the thing that was impressive to me about those particular documents was that throughout the documents, it talks about citizens of Franklin, that it will become, that you will, it will become a, you'll have a partnership with the citizens of Franklin around sustainability, and that you'll help residents preserve and protect the environment for future generations. This property, you know, was originally classified or zoned as a natural resource, and there was a reason for that, and it's unfortunate, there was a loophole, once we were annexed into the city, that it could be zoned, rezoned in another way. If I was looking at this property, I would look at it as a way that you could connect. We had, we do not have sidewalks in our neighborhood, and this would be a way for you all to, to lead by example, and have a green space in our neighborhood that would connect to Forest Crossing, where there is a city sidewalk system. It would encourage people in the neighborhood to be more, to get out and walk, and, you know, I know that's something that's important to the city of Franklin, is to have a healthier environmental areas, and also to encourage activity in neighborhoods. But I am asking you all tonight to vote against this. If you were living where we are today, you would be standing exactly where I am tonight, because this is not suitable property for building houses on. It is suitable for green space, and we hope you'll take that in consideration, and that you will help us live out Franklin's vision to be a sustainable community.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, is there someone representing the applicant?
Good evening, my name is Josh Henrick, I'm a landscape architect with Green Space Design, and I'm representing the owner, and be glad to answer any questions that you have.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion before we get discussion started.
I move to defeat this.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion?
I move to defeat it.
Yeah, I have a question. We have seen this plan several times, and I don't see anything different than previously. That catches my eye, there's concerns about access for emergency vehicle, as well as solid waste, the floodplain issues. What makes this plan different than the previous ones we've seen?
This plan is reduced density. I believe the previous summills were six lots, and this is reduced down to four lots. These lots are, are larger than all of the other adjacent rows of houses adjacent to it. I do believe that the, the drive itself has been coordinated with the fire department to be configured in the way that it is. It's a Y in lieu of a cul-de-sac, which was shown in a previous submittal, I believe. As far as water and sewer, I believe those are coordinated as well. I'm not sure if they're different from a previous submittal or not. As far as the drainage, I do believe there's been an agreement to come up with a, a solution to how water flows down River, River Gate Drive. There's a inlet that would be capped, and a line carried through to help solve part of this drainage problem that backs up on the end of the property, the bottom end of the property.
All right, Shawna?
Yes, yes. I believe that we have seen evidence that this is property that floods, and I have long been known as someone who does not think you need to build where there's, where there's evidence of flooding. Whether, in this particular case, I don't know that there's a designated floodplain, but, but that is one of, and that's number one, it apparently, is obviously, subject to flooding. Secondly, in looking back at the 1993, I guess plat, from the county, it, it designates, and I think we have a copy of this here, in front of us, that says, in this, in this area, that they are talking about changing two lots, 1, 2, 3, and 4, that this is shown as natural resource area, and there is a, there's a requirement here, no building, filling, or grading will be permitted in the natural resources area. And I do not think you can build anything without doing some of these things here. And so, those would be two reasons.
Okay. Maybe we have a second. Clyde, second?
My second is the same as it's been. I don't see that we solved the flooding issues, the water accumulation issues, and those in, in, in and of itself, irregardless of what was done in 1993 in the county, and it's come into the city. But I don't see a solving, I don't see anything on here that solves the water issues or the drainage issues. I don't see anything on here that solves the water issues or the drainage issues that would allow me to vote for something to be built in that area.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor of?
The applicant would like to add some details to your comments.
Okay, real quickly, please.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Checo. I'm with Dream Builder Custom Homes, C2 Construction. Appreciate the opportunity to kind of explain some of these things to you, what's taking place on the property. Most importantly, the thing that's come up from all the members of the community, and certainly respect everyone's opinion, and in doing business, we pride ourselves on not having a negative impact on the people around us. We're there to, you know, do a job and to earn a living, but at the same time, we have the reputation to build up and keep up. The primary thing that keeps coming up is this flooding. And I would implore the staff that we've worked with, with the City of Franklin for a couple of months now, to add some comments to this on a more technical level. But the gist of it is that what's occurring is, at the entrance to the property, you've got a large pipe that inexplicably has been dumping water onto this land every time it rains. It's been uncovered by the City of Franklin and their engineering staff, as well as the roads department and stormwater, that this pipe, this large pipe, serves no purpose. And this is the primary culprit for adding so much water to this site. So, your comments were that you want to see something different. When we explored the opportunity to pursue this project, we worked with the City of Franklin, we took their comments to art, and we spent time and resources to determine what exactly was happening here. Wouldn't be here today if we hadn't uncovered what we did. On the site plan, another thing that's different about it is that there are topographical elements to this plan. You can see the actual elevations in many different points on the land. It does grade towards this corner. That's important to note. So, you're not talking about water flowing off towards these neighbors. The hydraulics will show that if this water continues to go this way, and again, I'm looking for more technical input from the City of Franklin staff here, but if the water continues to flow down the street like the master plan calls for, then that water that they're discussing here won't be present. That's really something that I can't say strongly enough. So, all this water that we're talking about, heavy rain, is coming from the rest of the neighborhood. This is grading this way. So, it's not like water's collecting from all these other neighborhoods, excuse me, all the other homes, and ending up in this area. It's as a direct result of an inexplicable retention area that has been recommended by the City of Franklin staff to be removed and taken out of service. So, what we've got is a small pipe that'll be left, there's actually two pipes on top of each other here. We've got a small pipe that'll be left to actually drain the water off this site and this site alone. The result of our project will be less water on this land than there is right now, and by a long margin, because this is collecting water from this entire area. So, I'd love to, after I'm finished saying a few more things, respectfully request that the city engineers that have worked with us on this add their input on that. We sent out a letter, if I can change gears. We sent out a letter to the neighbors as part of this whole process. It's our first time working with the City of Franklin, and what we were required to do was send out a letter that basically has some technical items as far as who we are, how we can be contacted, what the project is. And we addressed a lot of the things that these folks are trying to talk about, as if they're these obscure kind of unsolved items. With regard to an association, we spoke with Emily Hunter of the planning department, and she instructed us that with a private drive, which by the way, the private drive is recommended by the planning department as opposed to a city street, and they mentioned that there are numerous examples of private drives in situations like this. So, what we're going to do is make sure there's an association set up for maintenance of that. We would have gladly drafted association documents. We would have had our attorney present. We would have been glad to do it in any formal way necessary, but the advice we were given by the planning department is that that does not happen until we actually do our final plat, and that it's assumed when there's a final, excuse me, a private drive, that that doesn't get done until final plating. So, it's not a matter of a lack of preparedness on our part at all. Congruence, I saw that, I heard that word mentioned a few times. I'd like some clarification on that. You've got, these are all residential lots here, these are all residential lots here, and these are all residential lots here. Looking at this plan, when I think about congruence, I look at this home that stands out to me. It's a 1.2 acre home in an area that's got homes that are largely quarter acre lots. People are talking about density and maintaining, these lots are all larger than the lots that surround them. So, in us looking at this project and the things that took place beforehand, we decided that we would not try to over milk the cows, so to speak, and thought we'd be conservative about the number of lots that we put here. When you're talking about lots that are 30 or 40% larger than all the lots that surround it, I think that kind of addresses that issue. As far as looking at the house from, I mean, if you live here, you're looking at the side of this house. If you live here, you're looking at the side of this house. So, if you live here and you look at the side of this house, what's the difference? I'd love somebody to clarify that for me as well. The idea of a natural basin, I think that can be contradicted by the topographical elements that are on that site plan.
Could I ask you?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm looking here, and I'm seeing that everything from the top, top there, looks like it's in the 580s. It goes down to the 570. The last one I see is 574, and then whenever you get to Rivergate Drive, that looks like it's 576.
Yes, ma'am.
So, to me, it sounds like this is lower.
It is, right at this point, but what there is, is there's a drainage pipe that comes across the road here and catches the main drainage setup for the city. So, it might be a little bit confusing. There's actually two pipes. If one, water flows here, comes around this corner. And then what's happening, and again, I would please implore the staff to add their input, what we've uncovered with the roads department, the stormwater, and the planning and engineering department, is that this pipe is a larger pipe, there's two pipes on top of each other. There's one large pipe that takes all this water that's collected from this area and dumps it on this lot inexplicably. And what happens is there's a smaller pipe directly beneath it that slowly takes that water back away. And the research is uncovered by people much more qualified than me, that is completely unnecessary. So, what they've recommended is that this will be capped, the larger pipe that's on top, and the smaller pipe will remain in service to drain whatever water collects from this area. I'd also want to recommend that you look at the fact that there is drainage already in place for all these houses back here and over here. So, people that are trying to talk about this being a collection area for a larger area, that's just simply not the case. Now, as far as the topography, it speaks for itself. You know, I saw a gentleman standing up here with a piece of paper like this. It's just simply not true. So...
Well, I have been out there.
Yeah, and the topography speaks for itself.
Well, it is lower, though. At least it is not higher. It is not at all higher.
But if we look at this...
But never mind, go ahead, please.
If we've got 577 here, and 576, 575 here, we, our lowest point here is, what did you say it was?
574 that I counted.
Okay, so if we've got 575 here on one side of the street, and 574 directly on the other side of the street, the road is built up. So, there's actually...
But look right, right beyond it, if that's where this 574 is.
Okay, so 575's here, and what's this, 570, I can't listen to that well, 573. So, this is our lowest point on this lot. This is actually lower, because it's got positive drainage coming off. So, this is a, this is a topographical survey that we've put resources into, and these are the facts. Does that make sense?
Well, except that you don't see that one that says 574, right, right up there, across, right under the 733 Riverview Park. If you look at that next topo line, it says, that's, I guess, below it, south of it.
You're losing that a little bit.
Well, never mind. But it does say 574 on mine, like I said.
Where, right here?
No.
Lot line, AL 20.
Thank you. That's right, right above lot two.
Okay, so, but that's, that area is not...
No, no, no. You look at the lot line, the top of lot line of 572, that's a topo that says 574.
If I may, might I interject to speak on the city's behalf on the drainage portion?
Thank you.
From staff standpoint, what Mr. Checo is talking about is correct. We have uncovered an odd situation with some of the piping out there. If the plat were approved to go forward, it would be subject to intense scrutiny from a design standpoint to make sure that it met all the city's standard hydraulic, you know, design standards and regulations. But we, what he's talked about is staff from a preliminary plat standpoint, where we don't get into detailed design calculation or anything like that. In principle, we do acknowledge that there is an issue out there, and what he's discussed, staff has basically said at this point, we're willing, if the board approves, you know, to go forward, we will look at it in much, much closer detail.
I have a question. Now, originally, of course, this was the county. When did the city annex this land? Does anyone know? Was it pre-1993 or after? It was after 93.
After 93.
Well, one of the things that, one of the things that also concerns me is, okay, so now there's a pipe. This pipe was put there by the City of Franklin, this pipe that we don't have any clue why it's there. Was it put there by us?
It was done by the county, ma'am.
I believe it was done by the county.
Okay, because my question also is, there's a sinkhole on this property, too.
No, there's not, ma'am. I pardon my interruption.
According to, according to the warranty deed from 93 in this, there is a 10-foot sinkhole on this property that has been filled in, and according to the notes on here, they don't know where it is, but it was filled in. So, in my mind, it brings some question. I'm wondering how long this pipe has been here. Has this pipe been piping this water here for, you know, for 50 years or what? Because in my mind, there still might be a problem. So, can you tell me with certainty that if this pipe is capped, that this will not be a water problem for, for these neighbors? That's what I want to, because just looking through here, I'm seeing all kinds of facts. Because here it is 2011, this was 93. It was on a plat that was done in 93, which tells me this was present before 93. So, that's, do you see where I'm coming from on that?
Is that question from me or for the staff?
I'm really concerned about that. I'm talking to staff right now.
Okay. At the preliminary plat stage with no detailed design analysis, we can't guarantee anything. With regard to the sinkhole, we did ask the applicant to provide us with a report from a geotechnical engineer assessing that. They did provide us with a signed and sealed document from a licensed professional geotechnical engineer stating that that was not a sinkhole, and they did an adequate investigation per our request. So, I just...
That's strange. Okay.
May I continue?
Please.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I'd like to read a brief email from Tom Ingram, who couldn't be present this evening. I believe he's the head of the engineering department with the city. Jeff, I just came back from a site visit and came to the conclusion that the 24 by 36 pipe needs to be taken out of service. Parentheses, when he mentions that pipe, he's talking about the pipe that's above, there's two pipes, one on top of the other, again, right here. Still in parentheses, he worked with Joe York of the streets department to come to this conclusion, as well as Crystal Bishop of Stormwater, who also, I believe, is not available to be here this evening. End parentheses, since the pipe is CMP, it will need to be filled with a material. Flammable will be a good material to use. The headwalls need to be removed or plugged with concrete. It appears that the roadside ditch on the south side of Rivergate can be filled, so the water can flow into the grate on the exiting catch basin. The comments you're about to receive from planning will be much more general. We will work out the specific details with the critical lot plans upon final plat approval. So, for us, we try to stay as far ahead of this and as comprehensive as possible, because I know that if I lived in that area, I can't stress enough how sensitive I am to what people's concerns are. This is not about us versus anyone. This is about a property that was on the market for a considerable period of time and was available to anybody who wanted to purchase it. And we just took one step, put one foot in front of the other, until we realized that this should be a project that is doable from a technical standpoint. So, when folks talk about May of 2010, I think that we could probably put together a couple thousand different instances of people that had an exorbitant amount of water on their property. Now, does it back up in heavy rains? I'm not going to stand here and say it doesn't, but I will stand here and say that based on the topographical evidence, outside an elevation that's way off and is probably draining somewhere else, it's clear that there's more water coming onto this property from elsewhere in the subdivision than is just gathering there from other points. We can't stress that enough. So, all the comments about flooding, these folks, although they live in the area, do not have the technical understanding of this property and what's going on it that, that we frankly have been able to in conjunction with the city itself.
Sir, sir, I think we understand now the drainage. Is there any other points you want to make before we...
Yes, please.
And please make them quick, okay?
Sure. Apologize, I don't mean to be too long-winded. The rain gardens, I'd just like to explain that. One of the neighbors mentioned that they didn't understand how that worked. Essentially, what a rain garden does is it presents, it's really, very simply put, extra rooting in the soil. These are not things that need to be maintained. These are put in place, and they do their job. What, theoretically, really factually, what the roots do is they, they slow the flow of water and actually hold water in certain areas. I would actually, given more time, probably be able to prove that, given the changes to the drainage, the rain gardens might even be a little bit over the top and unnecessary while we're completely 100% willing to do them. In addition to that, to wrap it up, all the concerns about construction type, rentals, or otherwise, they're not concerns at all. In our letter that we sent to all the neighbors, we addressed line by line anything like that. We tried to stay ahead of this. I'd be glad to let you read it if you want to take some time, but we said that we'd be glad to conform to the community restrictions for all the neighboring subdivisions. We opened up ourselves to communication from the neighbors. We did, I did get an email from one gentleman, I spoke to him, and I also got a phone call late this afternoon from this nice lady that spoke. We spoke for a little while today, but these are things that we've made ourselves an open book for. We're not trying to do things a different way. We're not trying to reinvent the wheel here. We just want to be able to build homes that are consistent with what's already in the area.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Staff, there's obviously some question about the natural resource area, and if that's even a buildable lot because of that concern. Can you address that?
There is a final plat that was approved by Planning Commission in 2006 that actually did remove that natural resource area designation. It is a recorded plat. That's the most recent recorded plat, so...
And may I say that that was on the consent agenda, and that was not brought to our attention? I can tell you, because I looked back at the minutes.
And I will tell you also, irregardless of what you say, call your engineering, obviously, I guess was maybe an engineering, reputable engineering firm at that time, so there was a sinkhole on here. Now, we have a report that said that there wasn't. I'm telling you, there's still a lot of questions from me, irregardless of this, okay? So, I want to be clear on that, along with the water. It's not just the water. To me, there might be something wrong, and if I'm going to err, it's always going to be on the side of the people who already live there. So, I just want to be clear on that. Thank you.
Right.
And I just want to ask one question that, it's just a question, because I don't think you can answer. Let's just say that we don't approve. What are we, what are we doing to eliminate? Sounds like it's, doesn't sound like it's a particularly difficult problem to eliminate the water standing and the water flooding if we've got a pipe that we're going to cap, and Joe York from our streets department has looked at that. Do, do any of y'all know where we stand on that? And I understand, we wouldn't, we would not go forward if we knew we could have the developer do something like this, but where are we on? Does anyone?
If, if it doesn't get approved, we can certainly get with those folks internally and take a look at it, if this is what you'd like us to do.
And what happens downstream, if you...
Well, that's where we have to look at.
That's another question. Yes.
Yeah, it's not just saying, okay, let's go do that. I mean, we're going to have to analyze it, so...
And again, this is a preliminary plat, and many of those things would be worked out between the preliminary plat and the final plat, but right now, we're just looking at the preliminary plat.
If they can be worked out. That's if they can be worked out.
If they can be worked out, obviously. If they couldn't, the final plat would not be presented.
No more comments, sir?
I'm going to bother to the gentleman.
No, no, unfortunately, no, thank you.
I'm hard enough to deny to support this.
Okay, all right.
May I have one?
Yes, please.
Another comment that I would like to make is that I'd like to err on the side of not building something that isn't, that is, is accessible to flooding. I mean, even though it's been many years ago, we had people who approved projects, and they lettered said to me, oh, we, everybody knew that flooded out there. And this is a case where not only these pictures, but the ones that were sent to us in the email previously, and I did look out at that particular piece of property, although I didn't go in their backyard. If, whenever you see it going back to their back door, that means that it did cover this area. This is certainly no higher than the people who are on...
Is it overview?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other comments? All right, the motion is for denial. All in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Okay, motion passes. All right. Item 38 would be a text amendment for zoning ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, this is a text amendment that we, and the planning staff, and the development community, as well as our alderman from BOMA, in particular Alderman Peterson, have been working on for several months. This particular zoning amendment will combine the conceptual plan and the regulating plan into one plan called the development plan. This will give both the Plan Commission and BOMA far more... This will give both the Plan Commission and BOMA far more information than they are currently getting in the concept plan that you see today, the bubble diagram. But on the other hand, it will also consolidate the time it takes to get through the process by about two months for the developers. The developers have been very supportive of this plan. There are a number of triggers within the PUD that will tell exactly when any amendment to the plan would need to come back to staff, to Plan Commission, or to BOMA. And the ones that would go back to BOMA are very large changes to the plan. Those that go to Plan Commission would be what you would probably see with the regulating plan change at the current time. Staff believes that this is the best of all worlds, and the development community certainly feels that way. Alderman Peterson has been supportive and has been in the meetings with us, and staff would recommend your approval.
Okay, thank you. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this? One audience member?
I don't think I like it.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there a motion? Is there a motion?
No for approval.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I guess my comment is, it was a, I don't want to say a compromise, but perhaps gave the, we lost the bubble plan, which some of us had a concern about, but we also have shortened some time, and some of the things, there are some little, the triggers there, I think, are the big, the biggest part. If there's a, if one of the, you know, if there's like a change in the density of more than 10 percent, and major change in the network, and I'm really not telling all of it, that would need to come back. But for smaller changes that are probably minor changes, it would not need to come back to go all the way through the recent middles again. And that seemed to be the two things that I could say.
One of the other pieces that's important is that there'll be a two-year review. Once, if there's no activity taking place within two years, it will come back to both Plan Commission and BOMA, and they will make a decision on it. Right now, our zoning ordinance has written that they can make a decision. With the development plan, it's a prescribed decision. You will need to make a decision.
Okay. And this applies to all previously approved concept plan, regulating plan.
Yeah.
Those are under the previous ordinance.
Those are under the previous ordinance.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item 39?
Item 39 is really a cleanup item that takes care of all of the references we have to concept plan, regulating plan, and some of the other verbiage that we have that needs to change in order to conform to the new development plan scenario.
Okay, great.
Just changes the names and designations.
That's right. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item 40?
This item is a request to change the name of Southwest Parkway to Noah Drive in certain location, just to eliminate some confusion that happens in those, that particular location, in particular with large trucks. And so, the neighbors and all of the people affected have been notified, and some of the properties are vacant, some are marked, but we have heard nothing that would indicate that there is anybody who has a problem with it.
Okay, we need to save that Noah Drive for those flooded sites.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Moved. Got a motion, second? Do we second?
Second.
Greg? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you.